Hello, everybody. Welcome. Welcome to the October 2nd, City of Port Angeles Council meeting. Could we come with the office? Mayor Rook?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Dexter?
Here.
Councilmember French?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Councilmember Meredith?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Tom Warren?
Here.
Mayor DeRae?
Present.
Attorney Moore?
Here.
Thank you. And let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all. Thank you. And can I have all the tribal folks at the front, please? Welcome, guests, from the floor. We're going to start tonight with the proclamation. So if I can have everybody come join me at the front here, please. And I want to introduce Frances Charles, who is the lower Ella Calla cheerleader for the tribe. Welcome, welcome. And welcome to all the drummers and singers. So I'm going to read the proclamation recognizing the 2nd Monday of October, of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day to promote tolerance, understanding, and friendship, and to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination stemming from colonization. Whereas the City of Port Angeles recognizes that it sits on Kalam Incestral lands and recognizing that Kalam peoples have lived on this land since time immemorial, and whereas the city values the many contributions Indigenous peoples have made to our community with their knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural influences that have shaped the character of our city. And whereas the City of Port Angeles recognizes that systemic racism towards Indigenous peoples perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating health, education, and social crisis. And whereas the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas in 2011, the affiliated tribes of Northwest Indians, representing 59 nations from Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Northern California, Western Montana, and Alaska, passed Resolution Number 11-57 to support to change Columbus Day, 2nd Monday of October, to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And whereas the City of Port Angeles joins a growing number of cities that have recognized the 2nd Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, creating an opportunity to promote appreciation, tolerance, understanding, friendship, and partnership among all people. Now therefore, I, Sissy Rook, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim the 2nd Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Port Angeles and encourage all to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the Indigenous people in our region, to learn more about the history of Indigenous peoples and their cultures, and to continue efforts to promote the well-being and growth of our Indigenous community. So Frances, here's our proclamation. The girls come up here, please.
I, Tommy, good evening. Well, I am our citizen, Sancho, and I'm glad. I am proud to present, to represent my tribe here today. We are happy to be a part of this historical event. The Lower Ella Tribal Community, also known as the Lower Ella Clan Tribe, is a federally recognized self-governing Indian tribe in accordance with the Treaty of Point, no Point, of January 26, 1855. This constitution by laws approved by the Secretary of Ontario on April 29, 1968, and the Indian Reorganization Act of June 18, 1934. And the Lower Ella Clan Tribal Business Committee of the Lower Ella Community Council is constitutionally a duly elected representative body of the tribe and the responsible for ensuring the health, safety, education, welfare, social, and economic development by law and order, judicial services, and housing of the tribal citizens. And to preserve and protect the culture treaty rights, natural resources, and otherwise promoting the welfare and interests of tribal citizens. And under Article... For Section 1 of the tribe's constitution, the tribe has authority, the minister of the affairs of the tribe, and the Lower Ella Reservation, and the City of Port Angeles acknowledges that Lower Ella Clan Tribe and our ancestors have occupied the lands of the Olympic Peninsula and surrounding areas since the time immemorial. And the Lower Ella Clan Tribe and the City of Port Angeles are working toward collaborative efforts in acknowledging the contributions of Indigenous people. And therefore, the Lower Ella Clan Tribe supports the City of Port Angeles in their honorable efforts to acknowledge Indigenous people by moving forward and changing Columbus Day, 2nd Monday in October, to Indigenous Day People, Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that the tribe throws Indigenous Peoples' Day as a paid holiday and that the Human Resources Department is instructed to make a necessary amendment of Section 701.1 of the Lower Ella Clan Tribe Tribal Government Employee Handbook.[561.38][561.38](Applause).
As you can see, we're really humbled and honored. And I think it was really important for our youth to read that resolution that was passed by our council memberships as well. And our hands really go up to all of you, and I don't mean to stand in front of you here, but our hands go up to all of you for the hard work and the dedication that this has transpired because Indigenous means so much in many ways and uniqueness to all of the communities out there because we're not one of a kind. And that's something of the educational processes that we continue to do. I mean, you see and you're witnessing today the futures of our generations and having the opportunities that they do, that they put forth with the future of our tribe as well as the futures of their generations as well. So I'm very honored to stand here with the youth and have them here participating with us because that's what it's really all about to us, is our future and the communities surrounded. We only have part of our group here. We have a group from Seattle that is with the other half of our cultural program down there. They're entertaining and working with them, educating them about who we are and where we're coming from, but also talking about the restoration and other cultural avenues that they're acknowledging out there. But we are humbled. We are very humbled that this has taken place. We thank the City Council and the mayor for stepping up and doing what we feel it is honorably unto all of us. And some of our elders are here, but they're outside. I know that it's been a long day for them as well, and that they were really humbled to hear what was taking place today, felt and wanted to make sure that we had our children here and some of our teachers because we have a lot of our language teachers here just as much as we have the other parts of them down there. But our families, we're all family, so we really acknowledge that. Our hands go up to all of you, all of you in the audience, and we're neighbors. We'll continue to be neighbors and collaborate and partner with the agencies and the departments that we do with the city, the county, and all of the others, the board and whatnot. So again, Hunt, it's a thank you.[713.23][713.23](Applause).
(Music). 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 (Music).
Thank you all for coming. Thank you so much. We are honored to have you here. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So with that, we have that. We'll move on to the public comment section.
Madam Mayor, just from a procedural perspective, you can go back to the roll call, I believe.
Yes. Councilmember Kidd requested that she be excused. Yes, thank you so much for allowing me. So yes, Councilmember Kidd's not hearing. She would be excused from this meeting.
I'm going to check seats, Councilmember Kidd.
Second. Any further discussion?
She attempted to attend the meeting, but she still hasn't been late. So I don't think any of the speeches will be over.
Well, and I know it's a short meeting, so we might.
Okay.
I'll hold it there. I'll look at the motion, please say aye.
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 All right. So now on to the public comments period. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak to council on any of your order, please come up to the mic. We've got three minutes. And just please state your name and whether you live in the city or not. Is this signed up? Oh, we got another post. Okay. Started with John Maron. No, John Maron. Okay. Christian Luana Baumann?
Yep. Oh, thank you. My name is Christian Luana Baumann, and I pastor at Holy Trinity Lutheran Church. We are not makers of history. We are made by history. I appreciate this quote by Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. because it acknowledges that what happened in the past has bearings of the future. Today, the City Council of Port Angeles acknowledges Indigenous Peoples' Day, thereby joining about 90 other communities throughout this nation. All these communities have decided that they do not wish to further perpetuate the historical lens of European colonialism, which has governed our national identity for so long, but to seek a more inclusive understanding of American history, which acknowledges Indigenous viewpoints as well. Indigenous Peoples' Day is commonly celebrated on the federal holiday of Columbus Day, thereby highlighting that Christopher Columbus, when he first landed in the Americas in the year of 1492, opened the door to brutal methods of conquest and colonization of the Indigenous population, including enslavement and genocide. As leader of a Christian faith community, I wish to point out that Columbus acted in full compliance, not only with the values of his government, but also with the values of his church. The door to discovery and destruction was officially opened by church authorities in the Papal Bull of 1452. Both Nicholas V directed Alfonso V, King of Portugal, to capture, vanquish, and subdue the Saracens, pagans, and other enemies of Christ, to put them into perpetual slavery and to take all their possessions and property. Other papals followed in the same spirit. This Christian doctrine of discovery greatly influenced also American law and policy, as can be seen in exemplary ways in the 1823 Supreme Court case Johnson versus McIntosh. Writing for a unanimous court, Chief Justice John Marshall observed that Christian European nations had assumed ultimate dominion over the lands of America during the Age of Discovery, and that upon discovery, the Indians had lost their right to complete sovereignty as independent nations. Those of you attended the Peninsula College Studium General lecture about local tribes, tribal nations last week, they know that this is not true, of course, and that sovereignty is inherent in a nation and does not disappear through an action of another nation. We are not makers of history. We are made by history until we decide to learn to stand on our own feet and act in history. My own denomination, the Evangelical Church in America, is among the churches which have repudiated the doctrine of discovery as it cannot be reconciled with the teachings of Jesus Christ. We decided at the Church-wide assembly in 2016 to repudiate explicitly and clearly the European-derived doctrine of discovery as an example of the improper mixing of the power of the church and the power of the sword, and to acknowledge and repent from this church complicity in the evils of colonialism in the Americas, which continue to harm tribal governments and individual tribal members. I give thanks to the City of Port Angeles for their proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you. Susan Helfer.
My name is Susan Helfer, and I'm going to read this so I don't get distracted. I'm going to thank you, Lindsay, for being on the radio the other day. I heard you talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was really good. So as you all know, Taffy has been providing services for nine years. It's our mission to meet the needs of homeless and at-risk that need help. Ingrid's passing out a list of all the things we do. We have a list of many agencies we work with, and we provide a lot for free. We do not charge agencies or clients. It's not an easy job, but something we all love to do. Three years ago, a Facebook group called Our Town, started by Brian Kelly and Chelsea Morgan and a few others, started causing trouble for us. They had a petition to change us and make us follow their rules. They started taking our pictures, putting lie after lie about Taffy in the media and on Facebook. The Our Town group got claims to not support us for a loss of about $6,000, along with KOMPs, some agencies, local banks, and even local singers. In fact, they said they would not stop until the we were destroyed. I repeatedly asked for help from both Brian Smith and Nathan West, and their response is to ignore it and hope they will go away. Well, it hasn't. One of our volunteers saw this sticker last week while at a local store. I've come to find out it's been on there for about six months. This person, who owns the car, is one of Our Town's original people. You can see he's got a little statement there. He was one of the guys that pulled guns on the group of homeless people and dumped garbage on a doorstep and said, "Trash deserves trash." This picture was a large sticker in the back of his window of his truck with our Taffy logo on it, T-A-F-Y, and it says, "Thieving assholes, effing you." For everything we do at Taffy for the community, to be treated like this makes me frustrated and sad. I want something done. And it just is a nuts. These homeless haters talk smack about the needle exchange, Vemo clinic, overnight shelter, anyone who directly helps these homeless that they don't like. Please, you guys are so much smarter than these thugs, and I'm sure you can find an excellent way to get through this. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Ingrid Karmin?
I've been volunteering at Taffy three to four evenings a week since January this year. I started because I heard Taffy was a good organization. I continued because Taffy is an excellent organization. Taffy helps the homeless and those close to homelessness who are under 35. Not only does Taffy provide dinners for 40 to 70 people four nights a week, but it also offers showers, toiletries, clothes, sleeping bags, tents, medical triage, and other items and opportunities. There is a great variety within Taffy's clients, from the easy-to-spot dirty person dancing their way through the room to their own music, to, for one example, an individual who has, with Taffy's help, gone from this type of dirty dancing person to getting a job, passing a GED, and now is determined to take advantage of everything Peninsula College offers him. He's still homeless. He still needs Taffy's help. A few of our clients have brain damage, a few others are development-related. These will never be fully functioning adults, but they will be amongst us for many years to come. Be kind to them, each of them, just like you, thank souls. I've heard the word "enable" many times. Is providing clean clothes, showers, and rides to the hospital enabling? Rides to rehab, does that enable? Asking them how they are, offering them help to take and pass their GEDs, helping them get public housing, teaching, or playing with their kids? As one volunteer says, "You can have an attic with clean underwear or an attic with dirty underwear. Which would you prefer?" And remember, not all our clients are addicts. With help from the Port Angeles community, Taffy does this all on a shoestring. One person receives a small monthly stipend. The rest are all volunteers. Taffy also does this with little governmental funding. For the past five years, their governmental grants have run from 18.5% of their budget to 0%, and usually it's at the lower end. And yet, there is a group in town who thinks it's cool to ride around in a truck with a depal saying, "What is on your picture?" It's time for others in the community to voice their support to Taffy, and perhaps drive vehicles which say, "Thank you, Taffy." It's also time for the City Council to acknowledge the work that Taffy does for this community.
Ingrid, could you please state your name and whether you live in the city?
Oh, it's Ingrid Karmin, and I do live in Port Angeles.
Thank you so much. And the last person who's signed up is Robert.
Taffy does this all on a shoestring. One person receives a small monthly stipend. The rest are all volunteers. Taffy also does this with little governmental funding. For the past five years, their governmental grants have run from eighteen point five percent of their budget to zero percent. And usually, it's at the lower end. And yet, there is a group in town who thinks it's cool to ride around in a truck with a D-Paw saying, "What is on your picture?" It's time for others in the community to voice their support to Taffy and perhaps drive vehicles which say, "Thank you, Taffy." It's also time for the City Council to acknowledge the work that Taffy does for this community.
Ingrid, could you please state your name and whether you live in the city?
Oh, it's Ingrid Carmine and I do live in Port Angeles.
Thank you so much. And the last person who's signed up is Robert. I don't know who to say your last name. So I'm just going to call him Robert. Please state your name and whether you live in the city.
You did pretty good with it. Everybody has trouble with their names. Robert Soyster, Second Street, Port Angeles. In March of two thousand sixteen, a large industrial crane was purchased and delivered with small residential lot, zoned RS-7 in the Port Angeles city limits. Today, nine hundred and twenty-five days later, that crane is still there. In two thousand sixteen, the crane's very first use was to mutilate and basically destroy municipal property, four very large and healthy city street trees. Timber trespass, no inspections, no permits, no permission from the city. Next, the crane is driven off the city street and up into the small backyard violating zoning and city ordinances. There was and is no legal access from the street. Then, for the next eight hundred and sixteen days up to the current day, the crane has been used as an aerial sawmilling platform. The crane is used to mill lumber by cutting slabs vertically with a chainsaw out of eight standing tree trunks operating as high as ninety feet in the air. The resulting noise and pollution is unbelievable. According to every tree expert I consulted, this method is reckless, dangerous, time-consuming, and wasteful. According to Port Angeles Municipal Code Title Seventeen, sawmilling or manufacturing lumber is permitted only in heavy industrial zones. Covering this residential property are hundreds of cubic feet of slab lumber and firewood, violating at least four International Fire Code regulations, the National Fire Protection Act, and the Port Angeles Zoning and Nuisance Codes. For the last three years, this same residential property is also being used for storing, cutting, machining, and welding metal plates, pipes, and bars into the sawmilling equipment that was used with this crane. This is classified as hot work, which requires an application and annual permit from the Port Angeles Fire Department. Another hot work project was cutting and welding large metal pipes into a thirty-foot-high, single-wall homemade chimney flue. The crane was then used to raise this homemade chimney flue about sixty feet into the air and then down into the existing chimney. No mechanical permits, no building permits, no building codes, no inspections. These are only a few of the law violations on this property. The presence of this crane enables zoning and other violations and is a substantial public nuisance that needs to be abated. The total lack of enforcement to date has enabled a situation where every illegal act produces another and then another. It is past time for the city to break this cycle. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the City Council on any item whatsoever? All right, saying none. I want to acknowledge that Councilmember Kate has joined us for the meeting.
Thank you. This is the first time in eleven years I've been late, so thank you for your patience.
No problem. And are there any late items to add to the agenda?
Not from staff.
All right, I'm seeing any. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled?
I'd like to pull number seven, please.
Any others? So if not, I'm going to read the consent agenda. City Council minutes for August seventh, two thousand eighteen, expending report from September eighth through September twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of two million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-four and forty-three cents. Electric energy leaders material purchase. Number four is pad-mounted overhead electric transformers material purchase. Number five, request to access Eller River AG station. Six, Sluson Gate purchase contract. Are there any discussions on any of these items? Right, Councilman?
I move the consent agenda as written.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any for the discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Right, number six, the Biosolids Dewatering Project, final acceptance.
Yes, thank you. I just thought it was important to pull this to give, basically, a verbal applause to our staff. This is a project that the previous council approved in two thousand seventeen. It was replacing aging belt press with a new screw press at our wastewater treatment plant. We need our wastewater treatment plant to continue to work. And we had aging equipment, and so it was a very expensive project. It was approved and it is, we're here tonight to acknowledge that this lengthy project has been completed and it's under budget. So I just read that and thought, it's such an important part of our infrastructure because it's unique equipment. It took a lot of research and they... Anyway, I'm not an engineer. I admire engineers. They put it together and our wastewater treatment plant is alive and well once again. So it is not in danger as it was last year. So I just wanted to thank staff and acknowledge that we had a major project that came in on time, under budget, and to, for the betterment of our community. And I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and let everyone know that we're really trying to do a good job and this was exemplary. So I'd like to make the motion to approve Biosolids Dewatering Project, WW-0205, for final acceptance and authorize the release of the retainage bond upon receipt of all required clearances.
Second.
Right, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. It looks like the next thing we have is other considerations, declare certain city properties surplus and popularize sale. Who in staff will be taking this one on?
Attorney Blor.
So, the city staff has received an offer from the Citizens Department that is included in the packet and they'd like to propose, or they are proposing, that a small piece of property be declared surplus. And then they have also included in their information to the city an offer to purchase that property after it's declared surplus. Under the city's procedures, when it comes to real property, it is up to the City Council to determine whether to declare a piece of property surplus. And then after that decision is made, if it is declared surplus, it is specifically up to the City Council to direct staff on how you wish it to be disposed of. And so that can be in any personally reasonable manner that you choose. But those are two decisions that, under our process and under our code, are specifically given to the City Council. So in this case, since we have an offer that is subject to the determination and discretion of the City Council, this is presented to the City Council and I personally determine whether you will declare the property surplus. Staff has circulated this proposal to the departments of the city. The property itself that is subject to the proposal is not deemed to be of any value to the city. We have no foreseeable use of it. There is a joint piece of property that is, was formerly right-of-way. It is in possession, in scope, under the ownership of the city. The engineering department recommends that we retain that property. So that property, just to clarify, will be retained, but that was not subject to the purchase anyway. So just, that's just a bit of clarification. And there was...
For those of you, on page I two of your packet, that is the gray strip. And for some of you who have it in color, that's a red strip. That's the previously vacated right-of-way that will be retained by the city.
And we're going to project that up on the board in just a second to clarify. So, there is colored... In the packet, there should be a color photograph and also a black and white photograph. Highlighted in yellow on both of them is the same piece of property. The kind of brown area is the right-of-way that will be retained, so that was not part of the proposal at all. There's the little yellow strip that is the subject of the surplusing and then of the subsequent offer by a person to purchase it. So, the city staff has no reason to suggest not to surplus the property. Just with the clarification that the right-of-way will be retained.
Thank you for that report. Council, is there any questions?
Go ahead, Attorney Blor. Oh, hang on. Just Council on the... So, I had a question about... Because the folks who live at seven oh four Elizabeth Place are across the street. So is that going to be like a little garden? Or is there... Do we know what the use is going to be since it cannot be developed? So, that's me.
All right, so do we want, I guess... To go ahead and come up to the mic and maybe what can explain the use of that property? Great, thank you.
Sorry, I turned red, so don't... Do you turn this on? It should be on. Okay, I'm Sheila Burkhart. My husband, Bill, and I live at seven oh four Elizabeth Place. Our property is... This property right...
Yes, the bottom.
This here. This is Lawrenceon. So, basically, what we are doing and want to do is, I'm being very honest, we are protecting our view because we live above that property. It has been deemed, it looks like that that property is unbuildable, but we still wish to protect it. My question is, Mr. Blor and I have had discussions on this and I guess I need to ask again. Now, in your report, it says, "Engineering Department has identified a need to retain a portion of this property that formerly was dedicated as Lawrenceon Boulevard right-of-way and has since been vacated through a street-vacation process." So, Mr. Blor, may I ask? Lawrenceon? This right here is what? What does that state as?
It states a right-of-way use.
Okay, and then you want to, the city, your recommendation is to retain the red, correct?
Yes, the engineering department wants to retain it with possible use of utilities, utility right-of-way.
Just utilities?
Yes.
So again, if we, if it went through and it was purchased, does every, does everyone along Lawrenceon and everyone in the city have a certain right-of-way? Like you have your landscaping and everything. If the city were to come in... We've had this discussion. It's very complicated. I think you know where I'm going. Would we basically have the use of... We don't plan to do anything with that.
That's what we needed to know. Any further questions you have of staff, I think would be appropriate later because we're trying to decide on this.
No, we have no use for that at all.
Okay. So it'll be just... That was my question as to why, but that explains it. Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Is there any other questions?
Yes. Well, Council, from time to time through the years, some neighbors have very cleverly spotted some property in the city that is of no use to anyone and not valued to the city and found advantage, whether it's adjacent to the yard or whatever, and we've branded that to the citizens. I was just reminded, out near C Street and Lawrenceon, there's a business called Port Angeles Storage. That was just an odd-shaped piece of property that was of no use to the city. Someone purchased it, actually, and built a business when no one else had any use for it. Occasionally, people will have an easement next to their home or whatever. But I think it's, we have some very clever citizens that can take something that is of no use to the city and value it. And I, this is not a buildable piece. It's just a little piece kind of stuck in the middle here that has no, has no future. And I would be in favor of a family that would value it and take care of it, take over it. And we, this happened in the past, and I would support this.
So are we saying the property as a whole is undevelopable?
The little triangle.
Or is it, are we saying just the little triangle is undevelopable?
The little triangle is the subject property for tonight's discussion and that is undevelopable.
Well, how about the lot holistically?
Everything else is right-of-way, so it's...
So just because of the right-of-ways of the streets, it's undevelopable as a lot? That's what we're saying?
What you're looking at that is actually a lot, that is the subject lot, is the area highlighted in yellow, which is an undevelopable.
I'm shocked about the bigger.
Well, there is no bigger combination to be considered in this situation.
Because of the right-of-ways of the streets?
Because of the right-of-way in between the properties.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Because I don't want to be rude, but view protection is not high on my list of productive uses of land. That being said, if there really is no productive use that is available for this, I don't have objection.
Well, I assume they will maintain the property. And that takes it away from... The city has little patches around here and there that clearly are not maintained. And that, to me, it's the homeowner who owns it will maintain the property that we don't want to maintain and have no use for.
So I think, I want to thank you, Sheila, for bringing this forward. I'm sorry, this is hard. And I think it's, you know, a great thing to bring forward and to look at. You know, reading through the packet, I was like, "I think they're trying to protect their view." Like, great job, you know? Because like, that is this little triangle. I remember door knocking in that area and getting to the end of Sixth Street and thinking, "I should just cut through there." And then I'm like, "I'm going to trespass into somebody's property." I'm door knocking for office. I bet you might do that. So I walked all the way around. And so, one of my concerns was on pedestrian access because I imagine people go through there if they want to like walk a loop in the neighborhood. I don't live in that area, so I think I'm not familiar enough. But by the city maintaining the red area, I think we keep a little gap of public access there. But I think my bigger concern right now is that what we're doing right now is saying, "We're going to take property that the city owns that we haven't formally said is for sale and with one motion, we're going to put it for sale and effectively sell it." And I know that there's some discretion in the way that the recommended motion is written, allowing the city manager to sell it in, you know, as the manager sees fit. But I think a matter of practice for us, it would be to do it as two separate motions and to first say, "This property is for sale," and then put on a public notice saying, "It is for sale," and then see who responds. is for sale, and then see who responds, and then decide to sell it. And so I would like to do this as two steps. I can make a motion now, but I might just let other council members speak before I do that. I'm going to make a motion which basically divides the recommended proposal into two steps. And again, the reason for doing this is not to make more work for city staff or for the Burkharts. And I'm sorry that it probably will make an extra step. But I think it's better for transparency for us as a city to let people know publicly what's for sale before we accept an offer for sale. So let me make my motion, and then it'll be up to the chair, but I hope that she'll accept your request to speak. So I'd like to move, or I'm sorry, I move to declare surplus, the portion of the property that has no current or foreseeable municipal purpose, and publicly notice that surplus property for sale.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
And Cheryl, I wish to note that Ms. Burkhart asked that she could speak.
I, could I, may I ask, have the neighbors been notified of this little piece of tiny property?
They have not been notified. And certainly, staff will respect the council process that council chooses tonight. I do want to caveat that with the fact that I would be concerned if we broadly advertised this property for sale, recognizing that ultimately, we do not want to be portraying in any way that this is a usable or buildable lot. And so I think that it certainly could be an additional step if we wanted to provide notice to the surrounding property owners who might have interest. But beyond that, I would be very concerned about expectations relative to owning and purchasing a property that ultimately does not meet any of the required codes for any type of development.
And I agree with that, just because, you know, from a legal perspective, when I see here, it looks like a vacant lot. So it certainly looks like something, oh, you could probably get a small house over there, but because of those right-of-ways. So I think that that's a reasonable point.
So, any else?
I understand the rationale that you behind what you're getting at, and I don't, I hesitate to put a broad perspective on this individual issue tonight. To me, if we want to make a policy of what your motion is, I would have no problem with that. But what we're doing is creating a policy based on an individual issue that's before us tonight. And I would be more inclined to take care of this issue tonight than later on to discuss your motion and make it more, because we're going to be then applying a broad policy to a very specific issue. And what I'm trying to get at is, I think we can deal with this issue tonight and then come back at another time and say, okay, in the future, if we're going to do this type of transaction, let's take this procedure or take these steps. That I would be more than happy to entertain. But in this issue, it's a small piece of property. In my mind, it's almost a minimus. So with a minimus issue, I don't think that we need a motion as such as that. So that's, that's just my point of view.
Anything else?
That is a home to the West, is it not? Can't be in favor of this until all those surrounding properties are notified, in my opinion. They may want that for a yard, and they're not, I assume you're going to say they are, but.
Right. Do you want to come up to the mic?
That's usable for yards, isn't it? You just can't build one. Correct.
Who currently maintains that? I mean, because it is cut long right now.
It is owned by the city, which when we first started delving into this, the city did not even know they owned that property. They believed that Gary Napier owned the property.
That's the neighbors.
No. Mr. Napier owns a lot of different property in this city evidently. His property is over by the creek somewhere. We had to get all the way through the title company before we realized the city owned that. And it is in, it actually has a tax parcel or a tax ID number, which the city says that you don't pay any taxes on. The city does not maintain that property. This house over here was owned by the Boblitz, who just sold the property. There is an additional 25 feet from the edge of their property right here, that they made an un, how do I want to say, Mr. Burkhart, an inseparable property. Basically, the Boblitz used to mow that. The current owner that bought that property now sometimes halfway mows it, half not. My question is, when you're saying, does it need to go out for a public whatever, is it not putting it in the agenda that's out there for anyone to go online and look at? Is it already not public?
It is, but it's, we have not surplus the property, so it would need to go out again. If the motion passes the way it's stated, it needs to be, we need to move there. So yes, it is public right now, whether the city will surplus that property or not.
And if the city so, I'm sorry to interrupt.
And so if it gets surplus, there's a different action, whether to sell it or not immediately. So right now, the discussion is to decouple it, which I think makes sense to do so.
And then I would also like to address, which I did not before, the value of it. We offered $2,000 for it. You have said that it's approximately 800 square feet at $1.31 per square feet, which is $1,048. We are more than willing to pay the $2,000 for the property. And we will put in writing, if the city so chooses, that we will never do anything with that property, period. We're not going to be one of those citizens that's out there trying to do something sneaky with the property. Well, there's no trees on the trees. There's no trees to cut down on it. There's weeds. So I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
All right, counsel. Any further discussion? Because I feel like we really do, I personally feel like, if we're going to surplus property, we should surplus property. And I'm okay stating it to the whole world, because we should not just limit it to the neighbors. This is city property. This is city's taxpayers' property. And the right thing to do is to just tell everyone and tell everyone, this is unbuildable, and therefore, just so that they know exactly what it is. So I would not limit it, and I know it may be, it may cause us more issues, but the truth is that it should be opened. It should be transparent enough.
So let's say if we do a notice to the neighbors that this unbuildable triangle is surplus, how long would that next process take before we can consider offers? Offer? We have an op on the table. So if we go to this next step, what does that take? How long?
Well, there is no, there is a process established for that. You can tell us to advertise it for a week. You can tell us to advertise it for two weeks. Theoretically, we could do a short process and have it back at the next council meeting. We can do a longer process and take a month. Again, that's something that you can, if you're so inclined, you can direct what that process will look like.
And that's why, along those lines of all due respect, I won't be able to support the motion, because again, two reasons. First of all, I would like to see a staff of staff process more firmly, give staff guidance exactly how long these things should be advertised for and so forth. And second of all, I do consider this a minimus transaction, and therefore, I think we can handle it in one vote. So for those two reasons, again, with all due respect, I can't support this motion. It's not because I disagree with the procedure, it's that we need to establish a procedure, gives staff clear guidance as to what the process is, and so they know in the future, if something comes up, this is the process that happens. But to apply it now without giving it a little bit more discussion than that, I'm not going to support the motion.
So I think that, you know, there are some guiding principles at play here. You know, we were talking about surplusing property, I think it is a good policy to have public notice. I agree. And I think that, like I said before, you know, when we were talking about view protection, that is not a city priority. That being said, I do kind of agree with Jim that this is, that I think this could easily fit as an action to those kind of principles that we're not dealing, we're dealing with an undeveloped property, so we're dealing with a really small parcel here. And, you know, so I do think that there could be a middle ground of noticing the neighbors and just making sure that there's not going to be objections, because we want to be respectful to the neighbors in that neighborhood. But I don't think we need to have a long drawn-out public process where we, you know, pass our proposals on when it's undevelopable, so.
The motion on the table, which, just to clarify rules, you know, so the motion was made in the second, it is owned by the body, and it's no longer my motion, so you don't have to apologize for me. It's a body decision, it's no longer my proposal. But it is to declare surplus, the portion of property that has no current or foreseeable municipal purpose, and publicly notice that surplus property for sale. There's a lot of discussion in there and how that public notice happens, but, you know, we stay amongst ourselves and, you know, between us and the city's executive branch, that we want to try to not surprise each other. And, you know, we call them, talk from no surprises. But I feel like what, you know, we're doing here is that the adjacent property owners are getting a surprise when they find, you know, somebody else is now mowing the lawn that they had been mowing on and off, you know, inconsistently. And I think those neighbors should know that the city is planning on selling that property and has declared a surplus and has put it up for sale. So out of minimum, I just want a sign planted on that property for a couple of weeks so that the neighbors know that, you know, the city is selling that property and what's going on. Because, you know, the lack of knowledge is often what facilitates neighbor disputes. And I think everyone knowing what's going on in that area would be a lot better. And, you know, I want to apologize again, Ms. Burkhart, that this is a little time process, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done in uncovering what's going on here. And I ultimately want your proposal to happen, and I imagine it's going to be the only one. But I do think that we need to be transparent when we sell real property. We're only going to sell this once, we can go through a proper process.
Anyone else?
I will support that, but again, I just, I want to see the neighbors notified. I don't, I guess I'm not overly concerned with the process that goes through, but whether it's a public notice sign on that property or just knock on the other neighbors' doors and say, hey, this is, we're thinking about surplusing this property. I don't want somebody to come back, like, what if they say, surprise, we own this now, and maybe they wanted it for more yard next to their, next to their home.
And the fact that, you know, it was unfair who owned it in the first place, I think, you know, is a good point for that.
I would agree that at a minimum, it makes sense to let the neighbors know. And I feel like, well, maybe it's a question for staff, do you, I'm of the mind to say that there's some flexibility in what this motion says, and I'm okay with staff. It sounds like that's what those of us in favor of this are saying, is that staff could decide how best to go about doing that. I'm fine with that being up to staff's discretion, but I do like the idea of taking a pause to let other people know in the vicinity of the property.
I also feel like we have a decent consensus about what our expectations of staff. And so I'm fine with the actual, you know, recommendation to not have the process come back to council for another formal decision. You know, as long as staff understands how they should put a sign out there for two weeks and make sure that everybody knows who the property is, and then give significant discretion, the discretion to offer it to sell itself.
So I would just agree with that. And I would just agree in the sense that it is not transparent enough. This is, to me, it feels like this is city property and, I mean, we've surplus city property before, you know? This is not our first go-round on this one. And I think as surplus the city property, it just needs to be put out to the public, because we don't own it, the city owns it. And really, I really think, even if it's, you know, a tiny little piece that is unbuildable like this, it's still not, you know, it's everybody's. Everybody should know about it in a like way, so. And so therefore, that I think needs to be noticed, whether it's a week or two or three. I mean, I think a normal noticing is usually two weeks, right? For most things. So something like that, I think at least that would be fair, you know, whether it appears in a paper or something, just saying, it's a tiny little piece of property, it's available, just so you know, city's surplus. It just seems like a fair process for everybody to know. And then, once it's noticed, and then you, if there's no other options, and everyone wants it, then absolutely move forward. But I don't, I think we really need to give the public a chance to know. Because I can see as maybe a neighbor who's been having to go all the way around, might want to buy it and put a sidewalk so they don't ever have to go around. You know, so and it doesn't have to be any of these guys nearby. It could be someone who lives further everywhere that's been paying. So it's not just the immediate neighbors, it may be the larger neighbors that may want that. And it's not fair not to give that option to everybody. Because I think if we're going to let somebody know, then it's our game to decide how far do we go and, you know, who's going to be affected. So I would say, I think we really need to really notice it to everybody.
May I have one last comment? I don't mean to speak out of turn. If the neighbor to the west.
You can't unmute. You're going to have to go to the mic, and you're going to, this is your absolute last
If the neighbor to the west were to purchase that, they now own their home, the little 25-foot whatever, and then let's say they buy that property, is it now that they own all of that, that they can do what they choose, build a skyscraper on it if they want? Thank you.
Within our system.
Right. And that's a possibility. So that is something that.
Within the guidelines of our system.
Right. Within the guidelines of the residential area.
There's no skyscrapers allowed in residential center.
You know what? They could build a two-story.
But there's going to be setback issues on that little triangle and all sorts of reasons why it's not developable.
So even if they add it to their site.
So it's clearly established, it's not build the whole property.
Madam Mayor and counsel, I'd be happy to address that question as well, if counsel so desired. But I want to highlight a number of important issues relative to the staff discussion of this. I think it's extremely important that counsel and members of all units be aware that this is a very unique situation. And we have a very good history of being very transparent and public about the way we surplus properties, as well as hold public hearings for those surpluses, as well as follow state procedures in all matters of surplusing property. In this particular instance, there were two very unique factors. One, the assessor's office actually had this property listed under someone else's name, and it was ultimately discovered by the Burkharts that it was City of Port Angeles owned. I don't know how the city would have known that considering the records prior to that title search. So I think that's a pretty unique situation. In addition to that, the de minimis value of the property is such that it's not even on the radar. is such that it's not even on the radar of state RCW's. It is not of significant value. And ultimately, we will likely exceed the value of the property just in the noticing procedures that we're going to implement today. I do want to share that I do think the surplus approach and the one step approach is certainly final staff. We're happy to do it. We will proceed forward and we can easily come up with that process that will include noticing onsite as well as a public notice, as well as some contact to abiding neighbors. We're going to try to keep that process efficient and not a great deal of time, but I think 14 day notice period should suffice and we will make it happen. As far, I do, I do want to clarify, from a developability perspective, should the property owner to the west purchase that triangle, I think that might be a different answer relative to developability. And I think it's important that oftentimes with properties that are constrained with setbacks like that, we'll receive variances through public hearing processes and that type of thing. There will very likely be a public hearing prior to that. But I wouldn't, uh, in that particular scenario, should the property to west acquire it, I would make, be willing to make no commitments that is undevelopable completely.
And I mean, not, I just want to have a topic a little bit, you know, if the property to the west didn't build it, you know, we are in a housing shortage. So if they wanted to build it at the ADU, I think that is a better outcome for the citizens of the City of Port Angeles than due protection.
14 days to decide if this motion passes.
So we've got a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right. Looks like it is six to one. Um, so, um, do we need any further motion on... Yes, we're just going to, that's it. All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you. I'm Salka. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Yes, you appreciate that.
And my phone number's in there. We will be in Arizona. So put my cell phones in.
So, um, we are now onto council reports. So Jim, let's start with you.
Okay, I have just two quick items to talk about. First of all, I attended the Olympic Development Council meeting last week and at that meeting, we discussed at length the NOBC opportunity zones. It was a re, uh, restatement of Julie's presentation on the NOBC opportunities zones. And so for the benefit of the opportunities, or the NOBC, she restated that there was a discussion of workforce development plans and also, I was probably reading the newspaper the other day, about broadband. And the NOBC is, is very concerned and, and going to be involved in broadband issue. Second thing I'd like to, to report was that, uh, for a socially awkward person such as myself, I had the opportunity to interview the homecoming queen for, pardon my, homecoming age. Lovely young lady named Haley Robinson. She was very patient with me and we interviewed her at halftime of the, uh, of the, well, shall I say, rather disappointing, uh, homecoming football game. But I, I might go on to say one other thing if you don't mind. The, the homecoming game was streamed live on YouTube. And if you want to watch the game and my stellar interview with Robinson, you can go to youtube.com and just type in Port Angeles High School and it will come up. The game, the homecoming game was produced by and directed by the students of the Port Angeles High School Video Production and Broadcast Journalism Class under the direction of class instructor, Mr. Patrick McGinnis. And I might add, this was done without the help of the provincial area of Public Access TV. Papa has decided to stop supporting the kids and high school athletics. And I must say, this is very disappointing to me. It's my understanding that Public Access TV is chartered to be a public resource. By stopping their support of high school athletics, I believe they are not fulfilling their responsibilities. I would ask the city to review all contracts and agreements with Papa, to see if future, uh, future relationship with the city should exist.
Okay. Um, so just last night, I, this is not a council point, but I'm on the board of directors for the people of the Accra Town. And we had a board meeting. It was really great. One of the things that I appreciated most is just, uh, you have this board meeting of this nonprofit and our deputy police chief was there just in the air. And so it was fun to see Mary Hill and Jason kind of just sitting after the board meeting, talking about, you know, the Waspick grant. And all the documentation we needed to see those things getting done in the room. One thing that, some of the takeaways that came out of that evening, Mary's talking about just anecdotally, homelessness does seem to be increasing. And so that's an issue as hopefully starting to house, will be open to their shelter. That should really be a good resource for us. But the problems are really there. You know, one thing, we made a public comment earlier talking about TAFI and all these services they do, they get to hand out, all the different services they do, which explains, and they explain kind of why. One really crucial partnership, Vemo, TAFI is a resource for Vemo to find people that do need medical care and to get to so that, you know, so they're not presenting risks to our community. One thing they do every other Friday is they go to TAFI and do vaccinations. So finding people that aren't vaccinated is making sure that they're not going to be, you know, spreading contagious diseases around our community. Some of those diseases are, you know, very dangerous. Hepatitis C they do screenings for, um, they, that are being against this big chart that has all their screenings for the last six months. And, um, there's a lot of positives they find. And that's, you know, something where giving these people their treatment so that they're no longer going to be, you know, spreading their disease is really crucial. So that's, that's a real world thing that, you know, because TAFI exists because they're serving their constituents, these other nonprofits can go and, and reduce the harm that we're seeing from introduced strategies and all their things. Oh, and my ongoing, my French book club, I just finished a book by Daniel Quinn, named Ishmael. And, you know, after our proclamation earlier today, it's a, it's a book that really was helpful to me in understanding some of these cultural issues. It dealt, it was really philosophical, dealt with anthropology, culture. And asked this basic question, you know, was, as our culture is often asserted, you know, with things like madness, destiny, was nature made for humanity or is humanity made to fit into nature? And that's a question that, you know, we find this really valuable alternate, you know, culture in our community that says, hey, there's a different way for humans to interact with nature. We don't have to be trying to beat it all the time. We can fit into it. And it was a really great book. So Ishmael, again, I would like to thank anybody. So thanks.
So in 2012, in the Journal of Urban Affairs, there was an article published, New Perspectives on Communityal Determinants of Homelessness. This article, some of its findings are summarized by Ted Keller, who's the managing director of Housing Assistance Unit at the State Department of Commerce. His summary says, for every $100 increase in rent, so per month rent, there is a 32% increase in homelessness in non-metro areas. So, um, and that's, that's right now, right? We're dealing with homelessness, you know, with people experiencing homelessness and it's because the rent is too high. So every $100 per month increase in rent is a 32% increase in homelessness. So, um, I don't know. I mean, we've got a lot at this point midterm and long-term solutions, you know, in the hopper if we're talking about addressing homelessness. But in the meantime, you know, that's where it's at. And so, um, you know, I appreciate everyone's perspective on it, but I also think, you know, it's the rent and it's people not being worth the rent. That partly leads to people experiencing homelessness. So, um, I want to share two other things before I finish my report. So I did get, as one of the people on the public comment at the beginning of our meeting mentioned, I was interviewed on the radio. It was the Canadian Broadcasting Corporation from Victoria. It was live radio on Monday morning. And so I'm sitting on the radio on the phone, waiting for my segment to start. And they're covering the NHL. And I'm like, what are they talking about? And I'm like, I'm in a foreign country. They're talking about hockey. They even mentioned Spokane at one point. So, you know, I, that's very, I say, yeah, it's fine. I was like, this is going to be a non sequitur. But the reason why they wanted to cover it in Victoria was because they had a discussion in their city about a statue of the first prime minister, which, you know, was end of the 19th century. And, um, you know, he promoted a lot of policies around boarding schools and, you know, calling Native Americans savage. And, um, you know, he must, you know, take the child away from their savage family in order to civilize them. You know, in prepping for that interview, I, I read the full speech by Captain Richard H. Pratt, which, um, he was the first administrator of the Carlsy Boarding School in Pennsylvania, which ran from the late 1890s or 1880s until the beginning of the 20th century. And it was really the model for boarding schools in the United States. And, and that's where that kill the Indian and save the man statement comes from, was the beginning of his speech, which sounds really strong. But really what he was saying was, you know, he says, a great general once said, the only good Indian is a dead Indian. But I disagree. I think we can actually save these people by getting rid of the Indian in them. And then he goes on to argue with a lot of issues that are really important for us in our contemporary society. And he talks about, you know, we've got to teach them civilized languages. And I think that reflects in discussions that sometimes pop up in the United States around whether English is our natural language and those sorts of conversations. I mean, he's really talking about who belongs in the United States and who doesn't belong in the United States. And he's approaching it from a late 19th century melting pot theory, which we now can critique. But when we take out some of the words he uses, like savage, um, you know, we see some of these same ideas in our society today. So I think it's a very relevant conversation. And I encourage people to read that speech by Captain Richard H. Pratt. It's pretty easy to find if you search online, kill the Indian and save the man. Um, so finally, I want to talk to one of our midterm solutions for, um, housing, which is to help encourage more multifamily housing. So I had the opportunity to dig into the multifamily tax exemption, which is RCW 84 dot 14. And also, um, we had a conversation as well, which was great. Um, so it isn't unfortunately just a plug and play ordinance for us as a city. It's a certain thing that requires just to make some policy decisions about how broadly we define the residential target area, meaning where are we going to allow this property tax exemption to go into effect. But basically, it does provide another deceptive in waiving property taxes for eight years or maybe even up to 12 years for properties that meet the requirements of this state chap, state code chapter. And also any additional requirements we want to set as a city. So that's another policy question for us. Do we want to set additional requirements beyond what's in the, what's in the RCW's? You can get the longer tax exemption by, um, by setting aside a certain number of units for affordable housing. And, um, just to contrast that with the system we were hearing about earlier this week, in this case, what, what can be done there is, you know, in, in a building, you might set aside, say, 20% of the units for affordable housing. But if people who are living in that unit, their income increases above the limit, you don't have to kick them out of that unit, move them to somebody else. You just reassign which units are the affordable housing units. So it provides more flexibility in that. You know, because, because sometimes these policies are written in ways where people get priced out and then they have to move, which is an additional barrier and then becomes a disincentive or even a perverse incentive to earning, earning more. So I, I think it's a great policy. And I think the housing needs assessment will hopefully help to guide us in some of those, those details. But it is something that I think we should prioritize, um, in 2019, after we have the housing needs assessment and handling consent for some of those things. So thank you for, for bringing it up and continuing to encourage us to move on.
Great.
Well, my report is certainly not as thoughtful as the previous two. But I will say that I spent all day, um, on Saturday, the 22nd, at Art's Miraps downtown. I was working. Um, so I was, I enjoyed myself, but I was working the whole time. And I just, because it had been a conversation that we had at council, I thought it was worth mentioning that, um, as with the other years, I thought it was very well coordinated. I had everything I needed. There was a lot of good support, a lot of good volunteers. Um, and it was just a really fun event. The weather certainly didn't help in the early part of the day. So I hope it didn't, I hope that they were, they felt that it was a successful event from a financial standpoint. But it did get really crowded and the music was fantastic. Um, and it was just a really fun community event. And I appreciate that, um, we made the decision to look forward to make sure that the Downtown Association could, could hold it. I thought it was good. I also just wanted to say a quick thank you to Nathan and I, and apologize a little bit in advance. I got there to drop some stuff off on Friday and they were freaking out because their electricity wasn't working. And someone said, well, we should probably just call Nathan. And I whipped my phone out and called him. But someone was there within 20 minutes. And so I really, they felt appreciative that the city was, while they were struggling during the day, as soon as the right person was reached, it was resolved quickly. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I did go to the ref riders game. It was a sad, sad game, sort of. But, uh, I guess since now that I know Jim interviewed, I'm going to blame him for the sound system that for some reason all of a sudden shut off. I'm not sure what the cause was there, but I hope our ref riders can do a little bit better. But it was, um, you know, it was zero to 55 or something. And that really wasn't the whole point. The point was, they finally scored a touchdown with a minute and a half left. And you would have think they won the entire season. I mean, everybody was yelling and cheering and, I mean, there was no way in God's career we were going to win at all. But it was just that moment for the public to see them just score the touchdown seemed to mean more to them than losing or winning the game when it came down to the end. So that was, that was nice to see. And it was a good turnout. There were a lot of folks there. And then went to the pool board meeting. Um, construction starts in April and hopefully we will be done in December-ish. And, uh, it is unfortunate that we can't really phase it the way we want it to. But, um, I hope that we can get that on schedule and then it turns out to be the product we want it to be. And I feel that doing that, uh, closing it down is not optimal, but it is, uh, a seamless, in my opinion, be a seamless remodel without having to work around stuff. So hopefully the SARC will work with all of those groups and the, and the swim club that is, they're all going to be out for a bit.
Yes, the, we're going to have a spectacular new, um, remodeled and much larger whole facility because we're just bursting at the seams now. So it's going to be a spectacular grand opening and it's going to be more people than ever will want to come. So we're looking forward to that for our future of our city. I was honored by being a judge and homecoming at the high school, um, high school assembly, homecoming assembly. And those kids were amazing. There are all these contests between the different classes and the energy and creativity was just spectacular, really, really, really fun. So they, from the beginning of the day to the whole day, they, they really celebrated our homecoming in, in style. So after our last council meeting, the, the next night, we had the final of the concerts on the pier, which has moved to the bridges. And honestly, staff was just so wonderful coming together and making everything happen. Cory was just so great in helping coordinate things. Teresa, Steve, our fire chief, our police chief. Teresa, Steve, our fire chief, our police chief, everybody came together. It was so, we just moved it from the pier to the, the bridges, and I was, the chairs were full, people brought their own chairs. First federal set up a booth and gave away free stuff, first security set up a booth and gave away free stuff, but we were very respectful. We start off with remembering those eight individuals that are loved ones that we lost, and put some bouquets on the fence for them in remembrance, and had a moment of silence. And I was, I was probably, it wouldn't rain on our event, and the first five minutes, it did sprinkle, and then it stopped, and the first of two rainbows shone brightly. Everybody kind of started taking pictures. It was kind of magical. We had a blessing on the bridges by Reverend Tom Stepan of First United Methodist Church gave a beautiful blessing on the bridges, and then I had called Cherry Kern, and we, I had invited the Lower Elwah Collum Tribe to give a blessing on the bridges, because several years ago, Francis Charles and I had had a conversation about the need for higher fencing. And they, a young man, his name is Jonathan Arakawa, gave the most impressive blessing in Collum language, and then explained it in English, and then they had a group of singers to sing a blessing. I mean, it was just really, it was really special. And then we had a band from Seattle, these are a group of retired attorneys that are down-home folksy. I mean, they're in their farmer's overalls, that got the washboard, the banjos, and they played these folksy thongs, and everyone stayed to the end. The Eighth Street Bridges Grill, which has really suffered during construction of the bridges and then those construction fences, they stayed open late, and he's never had so much business on one day. Everybody just, just, it was great. There was such a, it was a thank you concert for the community coming together and making it possible for all of us to feel safer, and there's so many compliments on the design of the bridges and the construction crew were very efficient. So, I just want to thank staff for just being there, doing a terrific job, and being so wonderful to work with, and Mark Abshire of the Chamber of Commerce is a pleasure to work with. So, I just have lots of thank yous tonight. I'm very grateful.
Thank you. I've got a bunch of little comments, or I guess announcements. So, Housing Task Force is going to happen October 5th from 4:00 to 6:00, so just a reminder, it's welcome, you know, to participate in the audience. We're going to put a table. We've got a couple of folks that are going to hopefully do some information, and we'll have some discussion, the ideas to move workforce housing forward, so. Then, the, there's the, there's a service line program that I put information for council on your box. I'm hoping that we can discuss it next time. I'm hoping maybe Public Works can take a look at it. It's just a service that's available to all city folks as to sewer line connections and some kind of being able to ensure that line, so in case anything happens to your house, between the house and the sewer connection, that is still the owner of the house's purview. And so, this is something that the National League of Cities feels like we should, we should offer, so. I said I put information on your boxes, so hopefully we can have that discussion next time. I attended the Charter for Compassion, and that was a really interesting, I'm sorry I had to leave early, but they did talk about the 12 steps of compassion for compassionate life, and it's a book, and I, I have not read it, but I would, I think we all need to read this. So, I'm going to read it, and hopefully, maybe we can push that discussion, because I know we had another mayor who did that, and I thought, and apparently, it really helped to break some of these things up. Then, the, I'm part of the Marine Resource Committee. On October 12th, they're going to be having a meeting. I put information on your boxes about that. It is at Harbinger for, I believe, sorry, I said, I'm unsure if it's 6 o'clock or not, but it's the MRSC, which is the Marine Resource Committee, and it's at Harbinger October 12th. And then, I'm also part of the Lords and Trust. We are exploring potentially adding a second floor to that building, or maybe even a third floor, but we haven't, though we didn't announce actually what can happen, but this is something that we're going to continue to push, or at least, I will figure out.
Which one?
This is the one that has the Blue Moon and the Fitness West.
Now, Fitness West on Lincoln Street.
And the last thing is, I'm participating in this, in this conference in San Diego that was put together by the National Science Foundation, and they are looking to set research for the coastal communities and coastal peoples. And it was a really interesting meeting, was just a bunch of scientists, and how do, where do we need to go forward? And so, there, there's been contacts, and I'm hoping that we're going to be able to get a couple of researchers here to take a look at what we, what we have and potentially help us with some policy session. So, I think that is all I have. So, Nathan?
Madam Mayor and Council, we have a number of items for your information this evening. We'll start with a PennCom-Jeffcom verbal report from Chief Smith.
I'm here in council. Several months ago, Regional 911 Director Carl Latney spent some time briefing council and getting you all caught up with this for our efforts for the last couple of years. Since that time, we've moved slowly forward. We've had the Representatives of Boards of Jeffcom 911 and Penncom meet and go through areas of interest for Jeffcom and what, what, what they want to know and what they think they might want to hear in terms of regionalization, and I've had some time spent with Mayor Brooke to, you know, get her up to date on where we're at in Penncom, and we have, I think, and it's set for us as a meeting where Mayor Brooke and I are going to meet with the entire Jeffcom 911 Board. There's still, you know, a lot of areas of governance, location, you know, how we would get to a new center, what kind of regionalization we might do, full regionalization, or whether it's going to continue with our shared model of a shared director, shared staff, things like purchases and software and things that brings together, possibly much slower. But we're continuing to move forward this project, and 2019, as we start, will be much what you see now with a shared director of both centers, and our efforts continue hiring new staff, replacing a 911 Systems Coordinator and doing the things we normally do to keep our 911 Center modern and moving forward.
Great, thank you.
So, Madam Mayor and Council, we do have a number of other items that I would like to highlight. On your information agenda this evening, we did bring forward the Planning Commission recommendation on the temporary housing ordinance. That was not intended for action this evening, but certainly council can move that forward if they so wish. In addition to that, I want to highlight a number of upcoming meetings. On October 9th, we do have a think tank, and I believe we have that listed from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. In addition to that, we have an October 23rd budget work session from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We also have a November 13th follow-up budget meeting as necessary, if we still need an additional budget work session. And then, on December 11th, we also have a think tank meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Additionally, I'd like to highlight a number of other meetings occurring. Mayor Brooke already highlighted one of them, and that's this Friday's Housing Task Force. I think we'd really appreciate hearing if there's an interest of more than four council members attending that. We'd love to know in advance, just in case we need to notice that. So, right now, it looks like we have three council members that have interest.
If you're going to be there, you should say it now, so it's noticed, because you can always not go. If it's not noticed, you can't go.
I mean, there's always a chance I might not be able to just work. So, if I don't, then you can have that.
It's probably safest to notice the next one?
I don't know.
Just in case?
Thank you. In addition to that, we do have a logic tax committee meeting next week on the 10th, starting at 3:00 p.m. And finally, I do want to reiterate the follow-up that was arrived at tonight relative to, we will be posting the surplus property as well as notifying adjoining property owners, as well as doing a legal notice in the newspaper that more broadly advertises that property as being surplus.
What time is the altar meeting?
3:00 p.m.
The same day as the Lincoln Street open house, too? On October 10th?
I don't have that on my calendar, but it's very possible, and we can certainly get back to you on that.
Since I got into this situation last, I go for some reason. Harber's Market. Crab Fest is down there. Harber's Market on Saturday here, or generally, it is at the County Courthouse. Perhaps Director Delkott can speak to whether, we know that for a fact. I do.
Yes, it is located in the River Park.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, do we have an event with the high school tour?
I believe that it is on the schedule.
It is going?
And I think it's due on August.
Where are we going to go to?
Student Center.
We'll talk afterwards?
Yes, Student Center, the Student Center, and Pam Hall, who's that will drive to you from there.
Thank you.
Just another event, just sorry for interrupting. I'm sure, bless. We have the last of the Association Washington City webinars on Thursday, October 11th, 11:30 to 12:30, and that's on effective local leadership, how to lead initiatives forward and get things done. It'll be here, and it is open to the public.
Say the date and time here.
October 11th, which is Thursday, at 11:30 going to 12:30.
If I might, please don't forget, this weekend, Crab Fest?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, bye. Be there, be crab.
There's a lot of excitement. All right, anything else?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, so, it's time for that second quick comment, period? So, anybody who would like to speak with council, please state your name and whether you live in the city.
John Ralston, I live in the city, P.O. Box 898. Wanted to thank Lindsay for helping out or having a discussion about 8414. I wanted to thank you guys for passing the surplus property process, and privately, I can give my reasons. And a third item, I have not spoken to the development, the development group that Allison heads, but one thing, it's, and the city may have it already in process, but it would be expedited permitting, so somewhere at some point in time for larger projects that have some timeframes on them, it's an item that you're going to need to at least be aware of and be thinking about. Thank you.
I'm Steve Hopkins. I'm the Operations and Planning Manager for Collum Transit. Two things, one, first, we're doing a voluntary closure of the Gateway Transit Center Friday through Sunday for Crab Fest to keep our large vehicles out of the downtown area, which is filled with pedestrians. It's a bad mix, large vehicles turning and pedestrians, so we'll be having our temporary Forest Street Transit Center set up here on Forest Street between Lincoln and Peabody. We've permitted that through the city. The, the street will be closed and be used as a temporary transit center. That worked out very well last year for us to reduce traffic down at the Crab Fest, and so we'll be doing that again. And the second thing has to do with your discussion tonight with regard to the surplus property. One thing, a small piece of property like that can make a big difference for pedestrians accessing two points. For instance, if, if the map was still here, someone living on Sixth Street to access the nearest transit stop would only be one-tenth of a mile if they were able to use that parcel to get through, but if that parcel's not there, it's a six-tenth of a mile walk to get around. It's a much longer walk, so there is some value that may not be just developable. I appreciate your kicking out of my.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we did miss one item, and there's no additional public comment.
Is there any other additional public comment?
Yes.
As you know, my name is Jeffrey Belay, and with Papa, my P.O. Box is 972. I want to thank the city council and the mayor. I will look into the issue about why we're not doing the building for the games, because from my understanding, I've not heard anything about that yet, so, but I did miss the last meeting, so I do apologize. But at this time, I also found out that we will not be doing movies in the park. It's on hold at this point, so I want to make sure that we are getting out there and doing what we're told to do. I know we're doing a little bit of restructuring for ourselves at this time and trying to get stuff going, but I am a member of Papa, and proud to be a volunteer for Papa, and that's why I do it, because it's one of the places that I believe does something good for the community. Thank you so much.
And thank you for volunteering and doing this, because this is really important. So, we really appreciate that. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to council? Okay, if not, Nathan, it's all your turn.
Director Delkott has one more announcement.
Madam Mayor and Council, I would put a flyer on your diets for inviting you to Grand Ole Bean, the new playground at Quinn-Ridlin-Kittner Memorial Park. That's going to be out on October 13th from 1:00 to 3:00 with the bird cutting at 1:30. If you remember, this is a partnership between OMC, the city, and the Quinn-Ridlin-Kittner Endowment, and we had a work party on Saturday where we had over 50 volunteers there, so the park was almost ready to go, and we look forward to the event on the 13th.
That is wonderful. Thank you so much for that announcement. That is absolutely wonderful. All right, I think there is nothing else, and it looks like they could be adjourned. Good job.